Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for coming out on this toasty night here in August in Rutland, Vermont. I want to talk about the goal for tonight first, and that would be to hear from as many members of the public as possible, and we should be able to hear from anyone and everyone that wants to speak tonight on how and where the city should spend the funds we will be receiving from the American Rescue Plan, or as it is commonly known, the ARPA funds for short. For those of you who do not know who I am, my name is Dave Allaire, and the mayor of the city of Rutland, and we'll try to serve as your host tonight. I was going to say, I was going to try to get us out of here by 8:30. It doesn't look like that should be a problem, but we will stay as long as people would like to continue to give us some input. As you came in, there was a sheet of paper out there that talked a little bit about our agenda. I see it going like this. I'm going to give you a quick overview of the latest guidance regarding the eligibility and limitations on the spending of these funds. Next, if any members of the Board of Aldermen, we have seen several here tonight, and any of my department heads would like to say anything briefly to the group, you certainly will be able to do that, we will offer some time for you for that. And then I want to devote the rest of the evening to hearing your thoughts from the public about what would be the best disposition of these funds. So, briefly, the American Rescue Plan Act included a total of $350 billion in pandemic-related and for the state and federal, state and local governments. Vermont will receive more than $1.25 billion of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funding from ARPA. So again, that's $1.25 billion for the state of Vermont. The legislature and the governor will determine how more than $1 billion of that funding will be spent, but Congress directed nearly $200 million of that funding directly to Vermont's cities, towns, and villages. So city councils and select boards, and in this case, the Board of Aldermen, will have the discretion, and hopefully the mayor a little bit, over how to spend their allocations, and of course, the members of the public here in the city of Rutland. The state of Vermont will not be allowed to add any additional rules to the roughly $200 million distributed directly to municipalities. This is the first time since the early 1980s that the federal government has provided direct unrestricted financial assistance to local units of government, and that's huge. Usually, anything that comes down from the feds has numerous strings attached, although there are strings attached to this, and I'll talk a little bit about this, that next. I'm going to give you the broad strokes. There is documents that have been put out by the federal government that gets into the details, and it's multiple pages, and I think they are open to some interpretation, and that will all kind of play itself out as time goes on. So, ARPA includes four broad criteria outlining eligible uses. First, to respond to public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Two, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Three, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. And four, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So those are the four broad categories that I have taken through the league of cities and towns that comes directly from the federal government. So, we, being the city here in Rutland, have received a first installment of funding over this past weekend of, I believe the number is $789,000. There was some confusion initially regarding our total allotment, since some of the monies were directed to county governments, you may have read about this, which of course we do not have here in the state of Vermont. However, with some work through our congressional delegation, those funds will be sent, just like the other allotment, directly to local municipalities. As I mentioned before, there is a long list of documents from the federal treasury regarding eligibility for the funds and their disposition, and there's still final guidance that has yet to come from the federal government, hopefully in the next month or two, but as I said, it's going to be a work in progress. One other thing, as I said, we have reached out to Rebecca Ellis, who is the state coordinator for Representative Welch regarding the total allotment for Rutland City. It is indeed, as was reported in the spring, and Representative Welch testified and spoke to the Board of Aldermen, that our entitlement, our total allotment is going to be the $4.4 million. It comes in two different buckets. One is the non-entitlement municipality allocation of $1.5 million, and the county allocation of $2.9 million. And again, that will come, half of it this year, half of it next year, and it needs to be spent, or at least spoken for by, I believe it's the, and I don't have that written down, but I believe it's the end of the year 2025. So again, the total is $4.4 million that we're talking about for the city of Rutland. And it's a large amount of money, and depending on where the decisions are made, it can go a long way, or it can be eaten up pretty quickly. I could tell you, my preference would be to try to divvy it up as best we can, to put it toward projects that are going to benefit the greater, the greatest amount of folks here in the city. But that's yet to be determined, and I think there's a lot of great ideas that are out there floating around. I'm anxious to hear some of them tonight, and that's why we're all here. So, having said all that, at this point on our agenda, I do want to afford any time to, first of all, any members of the Board of Aldermen that would like to make any remarks to the group, before we really get started, this would be your opportunity. So if anybody from the board wants to say anything, you know, now's your time. If not, we'll move on. Anybody? Looks like we're all set on that end. Any of my department heads, any of our department heads, I see several have come in, if they would like to say anything at this point to the group, please come on up, and you will get mic'd up.
Mic'd up.
Here's your opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be Chief Kilkonne up here. So real quick, talking about some of the needs around the city, specifically the Main Street project, not just the gazebo project, but actually the entire Main Street, and looking at revamping it, adding electricity and bathrooms. We had already started on this project, we do plan on going after a grant, but having these, the ARPA would actually help speed up the project and get us back to offering a great place for outdoor recreation. That's one of our first things that we've been looking at. Another item is Meadow Street. So we've been having some larger events there for the community, and we have a building there that we do need to rehab, to again, add electricity and add indoor plumbing for events. When we did a community outreach survey, one of the main things that the community asked for were bathrooms and electricity at our parks. We've done just about over 60 reservations in the last three months at our parks. Rotary has been used a lot because we added a bathroom and electricity. We're excited about the future, I'm happy to have this opportunity. Some of you out in the stands are on the committee to help with the Main Street, if you have any input on that, when you, this is where I'm at, this is my office, so please come and see me. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much, Kim. Anyone else would like to say anything, any department heads like to say anything before we get going? Alrighty, so seeing no one else, what I'm going to ask is if you could just raise your hand, I will certainly call on you. We are going to ask you to come up and use the mic if you feel comfortable doing that, so everybody can hear you, and all I also ask is if you just state your name, and then you can have at it, so please.
Hi.
Hi.
Please.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, my name is Amber Gahs. I'm here to just make a plug, a shameless plug, on behalf of my two-and-a-half-year-old who I spend a lot of time frequenting our city parks and playgrounds. I've come to see that there have, there's a lot of broken playground equipment, things that look like they haven't been touched in probably 30 years or so, maybe give or take. Speaking specifically, I can, we go to the Justin Thomas Park a lot, the gate latch is broken, there are toys like toy cars and toy things that children can ride that are broken, there are sharp plastic pieces that children could easily hurt themselves on. And so I would really love to see some of this money go towards repair and maybe even revamping a multi-use play structure for children who are maybe a little bit younger than those who are in kindergarten and up, either through development of something new or just bringing some of the current equipment into more safe and maybe more user-friendly condition. Woodchips have kind of gone away, they've brought in like the rubber kind of tires as a safer option for kids to run around and play on. There are other materials as well, but I would really like to see something like that, and I think that given everything with coronavirus and children not being able to be vaccinated, needing outdoor spaces that they can play, and I think it would be a really big draw to the families that we're looking to bring to the city.
Wonderful. Terrific. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, very good. Thank you, Amber. So who else would like to go next? Okay.
Great, if you could just tell everybody who you are, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name's Grant Adams, I'm a city resident. I want to reiterate what Kim said about the Main Street Park. It's our most highly visible park and represents the community of Rutland. People visiting or driving through Rutland see that park. Central to that park is the gazebo. I drove by there tonight, there are 100 people at least in the park listening to Rutland City Band, who is now on the ground playing because the gazebo basically is in disrepair. In addition to that, the lighting needs to be maintained and replaced. I agree with the previous speaker that, you know, we need some help, and a little short-staffed, it's been a COVID year, this money is best spent rebuilding our community, revitalizing the Main Street Park. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Thank you, Grant. Alright, that's two. Alright, sir, please, if you would like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Tom Russo, and I'm a Rutland City resident, and I have to agree with Grant about Main Street Park. I was up for a concert last week, and different lights kept coming on and going off, and coming on and going off, and as it got dark, it got darker in the park because the lights were not staying on, so I agree, Grant, that could use some help. I'm a daily user of the gym here, and if you haven't been in the gym, you might want to go look around. There's two exercise rooms on this end of the building, and they're hotter than hell right now, and my thought was if you could put in heat pumps, you'd have the benefit of heat in the wintertime and some cool air. These exercise rooms are really pretty uncomfortable, but it's a great facility, and I'm really grateful that the city chose to buy this place. I had another thought, too. I have a big list, but I'm not going to do it now, but I'm trying to think, the heat pumps, I think would be, oh, I know, and Kim can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've had one person claim to have developed COVID here as a member of this gymnasium. Kim, is that accurate?
As far as we know, or has been reported correct.
Yeah, because she has air exchange systems in these exercise rooms, they're excellent for filtering the air, and I think all city departments ought to look at what she uses in these exercise rooms, they handle a pretty amount, a big amount of square footage, and I think the air quality has been well handled in a building this size. So those are my comments.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, who would like to go next? Please. And the floor will be yours. If you could just state your name.
My name is Brad Morgan. I'm a musician here in town, played with a number of bands here. My comments are about Main Street Park. I've entertained from the gazebo, I think my first appearance there with a band was in 1969, so I'm kind of intimate with it, and I have as much of an emotional attachment to the structure as many, though I just assume, see it gone and replaced with something closer to the corner, so more people can see, so sound systems can be aimed in one direction rather than in four directions, or maybe a small gazebo to replace it, and a stage of some kind that's more suitable for the city band as well as bands like ours. So, as I understand it, it has been condemned, and it needs to be torn down anyway to rebuild it, so rebuilding something with that architectural detail would probably be very expensive, probably as, I'm guessing as much as putting in a band shell or something like that, like they have in Hartford, or in South Burlington, or any number of places where they build something that's appropriate for 21st century entertainment. I'm assuming that it would not eat up $4 million. I'll also throw out, Terry Jurasic said to me today, he would like to see some money spent on bike paths within the community. He said to me that he's seen how well it works in some communities in Massachusetts where he's gone to go for 20, 30-mile bike rides, and that they generate business because the kind of people who ride bikes with their families do stop along the way to eat, snack, whatever, and they've actually built businesses along the routes. It may not start businesses immediately like that, but I'm sure there's some available properties. In his case, he was describing places that used old train paths, so, that's my two cents.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Brad. Okay, very good. Very good, up to now. Who else would like to speak tonight at our public meeting? Here's your opportunity. I'm sorry, I don't see you so well, hi. Yep, Cheryl.
You're welcome. It's all yours.
Hi, Cheryl Hooker, Rutland resident, and I certainly agree with the mayor that whatever we do should benefit as many people as possible in the city. I'd like to see the city clean up some of the blighted areas. There are houses that have been burned out, if we could clean those up and make those parcels more appealing, perhaps someone would buy them, build something on them that then would affect the grand list and certainly help all of the city. So we could use, for instance, and I'm speaking on behalf now of my friend Mary Howard, who's the representative from this area and has been trying, as David knows, to take care of the house behind MSJ. She had a great idea about tearing that house down, making it a green space so that the kids from MSJ could work with the Farm and Food Center, grow things, learn about growing things, help to produce food that could help feed neighbors. So there are a lot of things that we could do. I know that on my own street, Roy Street, on the corner, there are a couple of, on Main Street, there are a couple of buildings that one was burned out. One of them thankfully has been sold and is being renovated. The other one is just hanging there, so I don't know what it would take, whether the city would need to buy some of these properties and at a tax sale or whatever, and then turn around and sell them so that they could be developed. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much, Cheryl. Who would like to go next? Yes, please, please, Kathleen.
I'm Kathleen Krawitzky, I live on Roberts Avenue. Sorry, my name is Kathleen Krawitzky, I live on Roberts Avenue. In this COVID crisis, we are all in some way suffering the consequence of fear and anger. Our culture and values, what we hold dear as people, is under threat. As a community, we must be able to come together to begin healing both ourselves and this divided community. When we reach out to each other in song and ceremony, we make that human connection that is so missing in this pandemic. Rutland City would benefit from the acquisition of a large public outdoor performing arts venue that would allow for safe social distancing and accommodate the new rules of infectious disease prevention for our local performing arts and entertainment industry. Rutland's history is rich in support of the performing arts. Rutland, Vermont is and has been a mecca for the performing arts ever since the Paramount was brought back from decay. In celebration of that cultural richness that has been nurtured by many, a large public outdoor space away from the noisy Route 7 can allow for our community to come together safely outdoors as well as help establish the rules of safe social distancing for the performing arts industry. Before COVID, theater and live music were doing okay in Rutland. Many of our local performing artists were part of that gig economy that shut down with COVID, leaving many artists without their livelihood. A COVID-compliant, state-of-the-art, outdoor amphitheater could be built on-site and utilized to provide both outdoor entertainment and collection of data in the prevention of infectious disease. Employment opportunity can be embedded in all activities, so the local performing artists have a backup plan for employment as well as a career in the performing arts. Talented Rutland students could advance their performing arts career early by learning the fine art of stagecraft that can lead to national certification in the entertainment industry. Music, as varied as the many hues of our skin color, makes us feel better and brings joy. Read Matt Riley's commentary today in this morning's paper where he talks about what ABBA sang about. I ask, in all honesty, what would life be without a song or a dance? What are we? So I say, thank you for the music, for giving it to me. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Kathleen, appreciate it. Who else would like to speak tonight at our public meeting? Please.
Thank you, Mayor, this is, I'm Jeff Wenberg, most of you probably know me, I'm recently retired, but I live, I still live in Rutland. I don't disagree with anything that's been said here. I'd like to suggest kind of a, kind of a thought process for the mayor and the aldermen to consider in terms of the use of these funds, and that would be to look at those things that the city needs for which there is no other funding source or supplementing funding source. For example, I'm intimately familiar with a lot of the infrastructure issues, obviously, Commissioner Public Works for seven years, and I could give you a list of 20 times the amount of money you have here that could be very well spent and ultimately probably will have to be spent over the next 20 years or so in order to take care of those issues. But there are state grants, there are federal grants, there are all kinds of low-interest loans and other incentives to help pay for those things, and I would think that these dollars probably should be directed to things, perhaps like the bandstand, for example, for which there isn't any obvious program that would help the city pay for it otherwise. And now, I am going to propose the least popular thing that will be mentioned here tonight, because it meets that criteria very well, and that is the replacement of Spruce Street Garage. With all of the water, wastewater, stormwater, bridge and road infrastructure needs that the city has, the notion that replacing the Public Works Streets Facility, it also serves for vehicle maintenance and a variety of other functions, but replacing that, which the public only uses very indirectly, it's functions to support the Department of Public Works. It is horrible, and the reason it is horrible is because there really isn't any other funding source other than just going to the voters and asking for a bond issue. I, when I was Commissioner of Public Works, I recognized the need for it, but there were so many other needs that had other funding available, you know, water lines, sewer lines, other things, that it just didn't seem like it would be something that the voters of the city would embrace, given all the other needs that they're well aware of. These funds might be the best opportunity to solve that problem, even though it probably would be the least popular. If we were to take a vote here, I guarantee you it would be dead last of everything that everybody has on their list. But that being said, I would encourage the board and the mayor to consider it, because I don't see, other than maybe the infrastructure bill that is potentially going to make it through Congress, that might qualify, we don't know what the rules are going to be on that. That might be another opportunity for that, although you never know how they're going to write it up. But one way or another, match, or very low match or no match, federal stimulus-type funds will probably be our best opportunity to correct that longstanding need. That's it.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Who would like to go next? Please.
There you are, sir. You're very welcome.
Hi, I'm Nick Santoro. I live on Maple Street. I would like to see as much as is legally possible of that 4.4, go to purchase the remaining property that our hometown heritage is holding. I think it's about $3 million. That's my first interest. Over the course of the last six months, I've spent a fair amount of time...
You can't hear you.
Oh, you can't.
Put the mic in front of you. Not like this, like this.
Like this.
There you go.
Okay. Much better. I have, this is the last sanctified, maybe the only sanctified land in Rutland City. Whatever the nuns and priests went through their minds and their spirits, this place, the grounds here are very sacred. This land deserves to be, for the people of Rutland, not owned by an outside corporation. That's my first interest. Were that money to go towards specific repairs because of the large cost to fix Robin Street and Maple Street because of the depth, and money should be going towards fixing those one-time projects. I really like what I hear about Main Street, but that's what I have to offer tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much, Nick. And who would like to go next? Anyone else would like to speak before us tonight? Okay, why don't we ask Randall to come up?
Then we'll come to you. You're very welcome.
My name is Randall Smathers. I am a resident of the city of Rutland, and I am the director of Rutland Free Library. So you may be surprised to hear me say that we should spend the money on City Hall. We should spend it on this building, we should spend it on some of the parks we've heard about, work that remains undone at White's Pool, and yes, we should spend it on Ten Court Street. Ten Court Street is a city-owned building. The library inhabits it, but we do not own it. It needs repairs. Most of the buildings I talked about need repairs. The building that Jeff mentioned needs replacement. All buildings need more repair than most buildings, and most of the city-owned buildings in Rutland are old. If we choose not to spend this money on these buildings in five years, or 10 years, or next year, or next month, we're going to have emergency needs that we may or may not be able to cover. Because we fixed the money last year, the library spent money last year to fix our air conditioning, because of that, I'm happy to welcome anybody in the audience into the library where you can get relief from this heat. And that sounds a little glib, and it is, but for folks who are homeless, it's not glib. And, you know, part of the purview of this money is to spend it on things that might be life-saving. Many of the buildings in the city, we need to provide services, and the library is certainly one of those buildings. We get called upon all the time when there's an emergency, when there's a need. There are urgent needs at the library. It is my sincere hope that we'll be able to heat the building this year. I do not know for a fact that we will be able to, because one of our boilers died. We got a guy in working on it. If it can't be fixed, we can't heat the building when it gets really cold. So the urgent needs in the city are to make sure that the infrastructure we have in place works, that the buildings work. I'd love to see some of the other suggested ideas. I think they're fabulous, but I think there should be a mix of, boy, isn't that really nice and shiny, and just making sure that what we have will be here for another 50 years. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay, Randall? Okay. Yes, please.
Hello.
There you go. You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Liz Demarka-Wineman, and I'm a Rutland resident, and I spent three of the best years of my life at this college. I am here to make a case for what Randall just so eloquently said and what Ms. Hooker said. We don't need vitamins in this town. We need painkillers. When you pitch a venture capitalist for money, if you have a limited amount of money as a venture capitalist, you're going to look for the entrepreneur that tells you they are going to take care of a pain. We have empty downtown spaces. There is no reason, no feasible excuse, why Three Tomatoes Space is still empty. It is a hulk. It is a dark and forbidding space. And, you know, resorting to a brand, if you will, we need to turn that corner in a million different ways. We have to find a way to get the state to fill that space. And we cannot be afraid of perhaps a chain restaurant coming into town. We're not afraid of Starbucks being on the corner. It hasn't killed local business, as far as I can see. So let's think about how we can do what Ms. Hooker suggests and what Randall Smathers suggests. We have painful spots in this town that need painkillers. Vitamins are great, but when you have a limited amount of money, we need painkillers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Yes, please.
Hey, George Young.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Joe Kraus, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, Mayor. 4.4 million is a lot of money, and there are countless ways that we could easily spend it. Many of them have been identified this evening. Blighted houses, the gazebo, the bike pass, the neglected parks, new garage. In the list probably, Mayor, you probably have 20 other things you could put on that list. All highly deserving. The sorts of investments that nobody would object to, that would be easy to make, but there's one problem. If we take all the 4.4 million and we invest it in everybody's favorite project, at the end of the day, the 4.4 million will be gone, and our city will look no different than it did before. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do any of those projects, but I suggest we should consider another path. We have been given a once-in-a-lifetime glorious opportunity. Let's do something big. I know streets need to be paved, sidewalks improved, the parks taken care of, water and sewer are issues. The list is endless. But this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Let's not squander it. Let's take the bulk of the money, maybe not all of it, and invest it in ways that transform our downtown. We have such great bones, beautiful historic buildings, a train station, a theater that is the rival of any community in New England. Let's invest in our downtown in ways that will do two things: attract new businesses, attract tourists and visitors, and most importantly, attract private capital. If we spend the 4.4 million on all the little projects we've talked about, we will have attracted no other investment in our community, and the 4.4 million will be gone. If we invest wisely and thoughtfully, and indeed we take a little risk and a little bold, and we have some leadership, we have the opportunity to get that 4.4 million back again and again and again and again by bringing in more investment in downtown, in businesses who want to be there, and people who want to come and visit there and take advantage of all the opportunities. I don't have a plan for what that would look like. I'm not a visionary, but there are lots of smart people in this room who could put together such a plan. So I would encourage us to think big. We may never have this little opportunity again. And I view this as a gift, and we can divide it up and distribute 50 little gifts among the community, which is the easy thing to do. Or we can take a risk and try to do something dramatic to improve our downtown, to make it distinctive from all the other downtowns, and make it a place that people want to come and invest, so that we can get a return on this investment again and again and again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate it. All righty. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight?
At our public meeting. Anyone else? Going one? Up. There we go.
I won't come up really quick.
Okay.
I didn't know that town residents could speak, but since Joe broke the ice...
Well, I didn't bring that up.
As a town resident, I'm Steve Costello. I've worked a lot on downtown, and Joe just said exactly what I was hoping someone would say. Downtown is the epicenter of this entire county, not just the city of Rutland, and if it continues to look the way it is, we're going to continue to have the same problems that we have today. It is critical that we show leadership and that the things that are happening downtown already get built upon. The sculpture trail, the artists, the new investments by young, new people who have just moved to the community, we've got to encourage that. I agree with Joe completely. Go big or go home. We're wasting money if we spend $50,000 here, $50,000 there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. I want to just take a minute to thank everyone for coming. Nice hot night tonight. We got some great ideas. I have tried to make as many notes as I possibly can. I will bring that back to our group at City Hall, both at the department head level and with the board of aldermen, and we will integrate your ideas with what we have come up with a little bit on our own, and they aren't too divergent from what you've heard tonight, and hopefully be able to talk to the community in the not-too-distant future about how we plan to spend this money in the best way that we possibly can for all of us here in the city of Rutland. So, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. Have a great night.